Thank you everybody for being here. Please stand for the invocation. It's going to be led by the Red Oak, our representative from the Red Oak Girl Scout. And then remain standing and wallow through the fire.
Girl Scout attention. Color guard advance. Color guard post the colors. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Girl Scouts a promise.
On my honor, I will strive to serve God and my country and help the people at all times and to live by the Girl Scout law.
Girls Scouts, please sing "Lord, we thank Thee." Lord, we thank Thee.
Lord, we thank Thee.
Once again.
Once again.
For the many blessings.
For the many blessings.
Amen.
Amen.
Color guard this face.
And then I thought I would just talk really quickly to kind of introduce who they were. We are the Red Oak Service Unit. I think there won't be too many of them.
Yeah.
Which is all the Girl Scout troops in Mandur and Alma, Cedarville, Mountainburg, and Mulberry. And it's just a handful of them, but the ones in the, what, Carolina blue, I guess, are daisies, which are usually color guard and accrostrators. And then we see the brown sashes, those are brownies. And so that would be second, third grade. And then we have juniors, which are none here, that would be fourth and fifth. And then cadets, we have two, they have the tan tunics. And they are same as our middle school, six, seven, and eighteen. And then we have seniors, which are ninth and tenth. And we have two ambassadors here, which are eleventh and twelfth. So I think we are here in honor of Girl Scout cookie selling happening. We get our huge shipment of many, many thousands of boxes tomorrow. And so Girl Scouts will start delivering. They'll start delivering this week.
It's for James, it's for.
They don't, they don't give us, they didn't give us cookies to the right people.
I said, they've already been being solicited back there. I thought we should have brought our order forms and.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, for letting us be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This will be a little different from the normal schedule of our city council meetings. This being my second meeting as, as the mayor, I'm really excited to have this on or to be able to, to deliver this State of the City address. It's a tradition all throughout the country. And it's something that I take a lot of pride in. Very thankful for this opportunity. I'm very thankful to work for the city. I've been here for eight years prior to this. So basically what we do as mayors, we're charged by the state to report on the previous year's finances and administrative activities. And so if you're a new mayor, you probably wouldn't know a lot about it unless you've worked here. But I can tell you that being here last year, the previous eight years, the things that I'm reporting on mostly, we have some really awesome people that work for the city and we're really blessed. And we really do appreciate everything. All the department heads, all the different employees, they really do a tremendous job. So I'm excited to be able to report on what's been going on in the city this past year in 2018. You can see throughout all this, we'll, we'll talk about various different topics. But from the various departments, we'll have a lot of different numbers. You can see the calls that were taken by the police department this year or last year compared to the previous years. Code enforcement is, it's a pretty, you know, all of this is really important, obviously. And later we'll, we'll show you the, the way to break down all the budget, all the money throughout the city to see where the bulk of the money goes. It goes rightly so to, to those who protect and keep us safe. It goes through our police, fire departments, our two chiefs. Again, we're just really blessed to have them. I've been able to know them for quite a while. And it's, they do, they do a lot, they do a lot for the city. We're just thankful for that. The code enforcement is a, is a part of the, the police department. When I was in the planning department, we were able to work with that quite often. But you can see, we talked about beautification quite a bit. Especially John, we'll talk about beautification a little bit later. But wanting our community to, to have a high quality of life, it's really important. And there are areas of the city that need to be cleaner. I know that, we all know that, that there are efforts underway. And hopefully in the future, when it comes to new codes, that's something that can maybe assist in trying to get us to that place where, where we think we need to be. So we'll talk about that as well. You can see some of the numbers, forty cleanup notices compared to thirteen in 2017. We do have a program where houses are, are taken down and removed. This is part of, part of what the police department does. Going to highlight a few things. Van Buren, it's the first time we've ever had an honor guard. And I was able to attend, there was a funeral recently of a police officer. It was a pretty moving experience. It was, it was something, it was definitely something to see. What was not good to see was the Bud Walton game where, where they went, presented the colors, and they got beat. So good job, chief. First time to do that. This is something that you've probably seen in the news a lot lately. Again, protecting our citizens, making them safe, especially in our schools, it's hugely important. And we know all the stats and we've seen the shootings. We've seen how violence doesn't just happen in various places, it even goes to the schools. So this was a very important partnership that the city has with the school district. We now have SROs, school resource officers in all the schools. And that is a really, really important part. So I know the students are happy and the officers are happy too. This is another, we talked about some of the issues going on in, in not just this city, but throughout the whole country. We know that opioid, opioid abuse is, is huge. And it's something that we need to address. And different departments are doing that. We've had community meetings about it. We've worked with the health department about it. But this is just a reality that our officers are, they now have to be equipped with this medicine that will reverse the effects of an overdose. And so they've already treated two of those patients and probably saved their lives. Fire department, talking about saving lives. Emergency call numbers have gone down a little bit. You can just get you a little picture of past ten years or so. Can see the numbers on the hazmat technicians that we have, forty-two of the forty-nine. Upgraded communication systems. If you've, we've talked about this in the past. We, the city has purchased the Old Daryl Thomas Building downtown on Third and Main. They're doing a lot of work on that building. It's, it was a really neat opportunity that the mayor and the city council took advantage of last year. So they're continuing to work on that. And it's got some historical significance, chief can tell you about it. But it, that's worked out really well for us. And the last one there, the ISO rating being too, is a really, really important part. This is just the location of where it is. The city owns all of this land and this is where the building is. This is the planning department, which department that I came from. And you can see the bottom there, that we are searching for a new city planner, that process is underway. This is a, it's a really important department. They do a lot. Really good gauge of the sort of development that's going on in the, in the city. You can see the, the various rezones that we have. Our planning commission does a lot for the city and I really appreciate all their efforts. And a lot of times we have the knockdown dragouts in the planning commission meetings. We have the public hearings there whenever we have rezoned or we change ordinances. So the planning commission does a lot of work in engaging the community. And these are just some of the various things that, that applicants have to go through. They want to rezone, the neighbors have a chance to come out and see what's going on with the rezoned property from a single family to duplex. And we've changed a lot of those rules in the past to make sure that, that neighbors know what's going on. It's, it's something that's really important to include the public, to, to get as much input as you can. And, and that's something that we want to continue doing, something that the mayor started. Mayor Frinney started years ago. And we want to continue in that spirit of including the public and engaging them. Many of the council members can testify to, when we went through the parks plan, the amount of people that came in, that gave input, I mean, they just made the plan so much better. And so the more input we get, the better government's going to be. And so we'll talk about that a little bit later as we talk about potential changes to codes and beautification and that sort of thing. But public input is vital to that. And we need to make sure that we see this. Here's another gauge of just kind of the economy, but you know, what sort of development's going on. You can get an idea of the new commercial buildings that have been built since 2009 and the residential, single family. This doesn't include multifamily or duplex right there. So you can see the values of the commercial and the residential. This is the rental units, the duplex, the multifamily. Hundred and eight, two thousand nine. Down to four in two thousand sixteen. You can kind of see where the economy went down and see how the development's affected by that. I believe that we're, we're on the upswing. Our street department, I don't know if you'd be surprised, but you know, every, every city has street work that needs to be done and potholes and everybody wants theirs to be fixed. And I'm the same way if I'm out in my yard. But drainage is really the biggest topic that we hear when we get calls from citizens. We got a lot of drainage issues. Have you ever noticed that driving around? Wayne, isn't that true?
Yes.
We have a lot of work to do and we just have to prioritize that. And I appreciate Wayne and his group for taking care of that and monitoring it and taking the calls and responding to those and being proactive as well. But the drainage, we have projects ongoing in District Hills. We could be up there for a lifetime, I think, fixing drainage. You can see the two hundred and thirty tons of asphalt used for patchwork. Knott Street is, is one that started last year. All the concrete drainage work has begun. And now we're just waiting on it to stop raining and be a little bit warmer. So, and a little wet like. And also they take care of the traffic signals and control systems. This is something that was begun not too long ago. I hear more from citizens about this than maybe anything else, just how much they love that service and how we will come to pick up the lens and the yardways and take it to our facility. It's a really, really great program. And it does, it does a whole lot for the community. These are just some projects, capital improvement projects that went on last year. We talk about partnerships quite a bit in, in government. And we have a really good partnership with our school district. And we've realized that if we work together, we can accomplish more. And so I've worked with Drew Cone and other administrators up there. We apply for grants. We've, we've really worked together to, to try to help the school, help the children. And also especially with this trail program that, that we've done. Students use it and then after hours, those in the neighborhood can come and use those trails as well. It's been really, really rewarding project. Our street department constructed the trail. And there's fitness equipment in various places. This fitness equipment, next, this year, we're going to begin doing more projects at City Heights. There will be a trail that's built. And then there's going to be this fitness equipment that'll be near Butterfield. And I believe there's going to be one over by the administration building. It's a new thing you see in other cities where it's outdoor exercise equipment. And we got a grant for that, so we'll help them with the, it's just an overhead view. They're a quarter mile. And, and I don't know if you'd be surprised or not, but it gets a lot of use. We, we have a lot of people wanting to, to be out and get on trails and exercise. And that's really good. And it's something that we, as a city, that we need to provide those services. So you've seen those priorities shift with parks plan that we've done a few years ago. And also starting to build trails. We have a bike and pedestrian plan process that will begin pretty soon. I'll talk about that later. But you're seeing these sorts of services being provided. People want them, people are excited about them. I get text messages almost daily, people looking forward to the trails that we're building. This was the first one that we built, Central, last year. It was completed last year. This is another, just an awesome project. This completed last year was the, the second part of Freedom Park where this is the memorial side. And it was, if you were there, it was, it was a great experience. And it was something that has really brought the community together. It's something that has honored our veterans. It's also revitalized downtown. And it's, it's made a big, big impact on our economy and the city. And that's what we try to do. We pass taxes, we want to build parks, for example. And then our idea is that hopefully, once we do that, we revitalize that area and you'll start to see private investment. So now you're seeing new restaurants going and you're seeing more people getting involved. And that's, that's the way it should work. We should work together, public and private. And I think that downtown, downtown is really thriving. We need to continue to support it and we'll do so. These are some, just a snapshot, again, if you go back to the, what the state statute says, really this is all about finances. This is the, the money that we're given by taxes. We have a responsibility to be good stewards of that money and to provide the services that the community wants. And that's why public input is absolutely vital. And we have to engage as elected officials, as us in the city government. We need to always be looking at ways that we can engage the public. And if that's through the internet, if that's through Facebook Live, if it's from taping our meetings and putting them on YouTube, that's what we need to do. And we need to engage. Because the opinions are out there and there's lots of good ideas out there. And not everybody's going to come to a meeting, so we need to go after them. So looking at capital improvements, this is just a snapshot. County sales tax that we've collected since 2011. And it goes towards capital improvements. This again, there's little microcosms of the economy. You can see increases, decreases. Hopefully there's, there's positive trends. There seems to be positive trends going. Street funds. Fuel turnback money, county road money, and municipal highway tax money all goes towards those street funds. And you can see that we're on the rise since 2014. The state turnback, I don't know if you followed in the legislature, this is a really big issue that's coming up. Because the original agreement from the tax that comes in for streets, it's seventy percent goes to the state, fifteen percent goes to the county, fifteen percent goes to the city. And that agreement is going to expire in, really say, I can't remember when. But they're having to renegotiate that. The legislature's going to have to pass that or else we're going to lose street turnback money. And, and that money goes a long way. And that funds a lot of the work that we do. So we need to encourage our legislators to make sure they, they get that and make sure that we have the monies to, to do that work. It's just another pot of money from property tax that goes towards streets for the past few years. General funds is all the different streams of money from property tax, sales tax, all the different fines and fees that we have. Other, there's another state turnback and the franchise fees. This is all the revenue that the city gets. And it's a snapshot of where we are. This is the sales tax from 2012, when we passed the one cent sales tax in Van Buren. Previous to that, it was just a one cent. And now we have two cents. Half of that cent is not figured in here because that half cent's being used to pay off the bonds to build the police station, fire station, senior center, and parks. So this is actually the sales tax. It's one and a half cents that's going, that is permanent at this time. Later we'll talk about the potential for what do we want to do with that other half cent? And so when that, when those bonds are paid off, which will be towards the end of this year, we've begun those conversations in, in various places. But we need to ask ourselves, do we want to let that half cent expire? Or do we want to reinvest that half cent to do more projects? And if we do, we need to, to be working together and communicating with the public to make sure we know what projects need to be funded. So that's, that's a really big issue this coming year. It's one that we've been, we've, we've seen it coming for, for quite a while. And we've, we've had various meetings about it. But really it's just about engaging the input of the community and seeing what, what the will of the public is. Permanent fees, various bonds. You can see the big difference when the jail was built, the difference in the monies there. Franchise taxes. There's a certain amount, you can tax the franchises, the utilities, I think it's four point two five percent to use our rideaway. And that money goes into, into our budget. In the past, we weren't, we actually weren't getting enough money from that percentage. And the city council a few years ago fixed that. So we've got the revenue stream from that now. Here's a little snapshot, just to see the, the various monies, where they go, how it's funded. Like I said earlier, from police and fire is, is a big chunk of that. Keep Van Buren beautiful. We talked about quality of place and quality of life and cleaning up the city and making it an awesome place to live. We hear that, that's what I want. I want my kids to, to move back here and raise their kids here so I can see my grandkids in Van Buren. But we got to keep Van Buren beautiful. And this is a, this is a great effort by John and his group. This is one thing that they do with the Community Worker Program. Those, the number there, those are bags of trash. How big are those, John?
Thirty-six gallon. They're, they're trash can size bags.
Those are not the small ones. So does this mean that, that we've gotten cleaner?
Well, it varies depending upon how many workers we have assigned from the court system.
So this is something that, if you haven't been to Lee Creek Park lately, this is a project that began as a partnership with the Job Corps from CAS. We've talked about it in the past. This has really grown up. It's a really, a lot of potential for this area that I went by today. I mean, it looks amazing, a lot different. Again, talking about trails, talking about quality of life, providing the services that the citizens want. This is a, a trail project that we've been planning for a while and starting to construct those trails. It's been raining a lot, as I said, so kind of delayed in some ways. But I expect to have a, to have a parks meeting coming up in March to discuss this plan and where we are. But it's going to be really, really, a lot of potential there as well. Talking about moving forward, this is, this is an initiative that began last year. This is from the, the governor. What it does, it allows cities to qualify and to be certified as a competitive community. And what it does, it, it allows us to get to rooms and say, okay, what do we need to do to make sure that we can attract the businesses that we need? What are other communities doing? What do we need to step up and do? And so we're getting really close to completing this and hopefully be certified this year. But we've had to, to follow different steps and organize different groups. That's going, that's going really well. Business retention and expansion. As I've talked about communication and engaging the public and involving our citizens and our business community, we can always do better. We always want higher paying jobs. We always want to have the industry here. But again, we've got to communicate with our existing businesses to let, just, they need to tell us, what do we need to do? What do you need? What do we need to do better? What sort of resources do you need? And so this is a program that's being developed. I'm working with Western Arkansas Planning and Development out of Fort Smith. They have grant monies available to help us with this program. And so we'll be organizing leadership team, various people from different businesses and industry in the city. And we'll devise a plan of, of what do we need to do? How, how do we need to communicate? We need to make sure that we're talking to our employers and, and listening to them. And so I'm excited about that project. It's going to start pretty soon, but that's going to be really good. Updating codes. This is part of the philosophy of, you know, we ask the question, what, what is Van Buren going to be? Who are we trying to be? What is Van Buren? And we know that when I lived here back in nineteen ninety, the traffic's a lot different back then than it is today. And we're not the small city that we used to be. And we're not the small city that we used to be. And there's some growing pains with that. And so, traffic is one of those. But it's also trying to determine, when we hear, hey, we need to clean up the city, we need to have landscape plans already. We don't want metal buildings in certain areas. We hear those in different planning commission meetings and public hearings. But what we've got to determine is, how much control do we need to have? And that's what every city deals with. You don't want to have too far on this side. You don't want to be too lenient. You don't want to be too extreme. And so, our planning commission has been working for a while, researching other cities, seeing what works in different communities. And I really look forward to, to working on improving some of our codes. And we've started doing that for the past 10 years. We've updated a lot. But there's still a lot of work to do. And that's just going to take communication and get with the public. And so, our Chamber of Commerce, I had a meeting there recently. And I'll show you a slide in a minute from a plan that was developed in 2015 that talks about updating our codes. And so, it's something that's on the minds of a lot of people. So I'll look forward to, to working on those. The Port Project, you've read the paper probably recently. This is an ongoing project. It's something that the city council in the past has been fully behind. Tonight, we have another $21,000 to put towards this Western Arkansas Intermodal Authority. And that's all about economic development. We have a really awesome location down here. We're, we're a transportation hub. We've got rail, we've got highway, we've got train, rail, and we've got the river. And the river is really what separates us. And so, there's a lot of potential for that area. And we've had a lot of people from all across the country showing interest in that project. So, that's ongoing. And it's really a lot of potential there for economic development. And then also, talking about economic development and funding and financing, the census is so important. Because a lot of those, the monies that we receive from the government, it's based on population. And we've got to make sure that we get everybody counted. And so, as we get closer to that, we'll be organizing teams with the Census Bureau and just get the word out. We need everybody counted. And that's, that has a big financial impact on the community. Wrapping up, this is, this is the plan that was developed in 2015. It's a strategic economic development plan that the city did with the chamber. Went through a lot of planning. We've begun some of the initiatives, some of the goals that have been taken care of. We've accomplished some things, dealing with parks and quality of life and investing in downtown. This is something that, that we want to bring back and make sure that we're following it, make sure that we're, we're using it as a guide in the decisions that we're making. So I hope to continue to bring this up and make sure that we're following exactly what, what we set out back in 2015. And if not, then maybe we need to develop something else. Maybe priorities have shifted. But I just wanted everyone to remember that this is out there. And this was goal one. Says Van Buren significantly improved the community's attractiveness for citizens, visitors, and existing and new businesses. So it's a really, really important priority and it's, we've been addressing it, but we just need to continue to do that. Just a few projects that I mentioned. We have more sidewalks that we're building. We received a grant for the north side of Porter Trail. And that'll be happening close to the summer. Downtown, trying to be more walkable. It's just another project that we want to be completing this year. Then we'll have a bike and pedestrian plan that, that we've been working with Western Arkansas Planning on that. And it begins in some public hearings, April 1st. So we'll be looking for that. This just ties into this whole initiative of the quality of our place. And this is, this sort of thing is what's attracting people. And so, we need to, we need to adjust. We don't have bike lanes. We don't have as many sidewalks. We don't have trails. But this is something that we've heard the community say that that's what they want. And so, this is something that we, as elected officials, need to be responsive to that. And so, we're starting that pretty soon. Really excited. Wayfinding, this is more things that you'll start seeing pop up throughout the city. Maybe not hard for us to get around, but especially when you talk about the school facilities, whether it's the football or baseball or basketball, that it's kind of not easy to get around in this community. And this is something that we've been working on with other communities in the River Valley. So you'll see these start to pop up, Fort Smith and Alma and Van Buren and other cities are starting to do that. You already see these, which are city themed in Northwest Arkansas. It's going to be neat to see that around here. This is just a reminder of the half-cent sales tax that, that we will be continuing to talk about, planning for, asking what sort of projects, do we want to reinvest that half cent? And so, that will be very much on the radar. Here's the last, last two slides from Van Buren. Born and raised here. It's amazing what our community can do when we come together, when we work together. To see a disaster that happened with the tornado at the end of last year. To see the, the meeting in this, in this room where citizens were, they didn't know what to do. So they came to their elected officials, who have a responsibility to, to do what they can to help. And it was a really neat meeting. And it just shows you what can happen when we communicate, when we are just intentional about trying to help. And, and I've talked to all the city council and Phil, so we see ourselves as wanting to serve. And so, I just encourage everyone to do that. This is the last slide. This is, this is all the awards that we've got for Volunteer Community of the Year. That should give us some pride. And I received this last award. There are only four cities in Arkansas who got it. And again, it's a stat. It was thirty, power being thirty-two out of the thirty-five years we've received that award. And they don't just give that out. This is symbolic of who our community is and what we can do when we come together. So, I'm excited. I appreciate the opportunity to serve this capacity and I look forward to speaking to the community as we try to do for it. So now, we're getting on with the real business. Do you have a copy of minutes from last March? Regular meeting on January 28th. Are there any corrections? No. I will take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding fixed asset disposal. I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution to authorize the mayor and city clerk to remove and dispose of certain fixed assets from the city of Van Buren's fixed asset inventory by sealed, bid auction, or other method authorized under the law and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Van Buren has certain fixed assets on its fixed asset inventory list, which are obsolete and or beyond repair and are no longer cost effective, so it's to no longer be needed by the city. And whereas, according to inventory of fixed assets, it is therefore recommended by our state auditor that said items or item be removed from the city's fixed asset inventory and disposed of, sealed, bid, auctioned, or as otherwise authorized under ACA 1454-302. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to remove the following asset or assets from the fixed asset inventory and to dispose of same by sealed, bid, auction, or other such methods authorized under the law. Department, Police Department, amount $23,307. Description of inventory, 2013 Ford Police Interceptor Sedan, VIN number 1FAHP2M84DG124141, control number PD713. Police Department, amount $2,154.60. A Canon Scan, front 220 document scanner, serial number DS302360, control number PD667.
Is there any discussion, any questions? You can see it's a 2013 Ford Interceptor Sedan.
Right. It was involved in accident insurance, it was bought, it was brought out.
I'll take your approval. Give me a second. Will the clerk, please call the room?
Councilmember Dodson. Councilmember Swine. Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Sparkman. Councilmember Nealon.
As Haddad, I would declare the resolution number...
Zero two dash zero one, 2019.
Zero one, 2019 has passed. Next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding financial support of Western Arkansas Intermodal Authority for the year of 2019. Clerk, please read.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, resolution to authorize the mayor to provide financial assistance to the Western Arkansas Intermodal Authority for regional economic development. Whereas the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, recognizes the need for regional economic development cooperation. And whereas the Western Arkansas Intermodal Authority, WAIA, was formed by the cities of Van Buren Enforcement and the counties of Crawford and Sebastian, to work toward improving the area's effectiveness in transporting goods while enhancing the potential for economic development in the region. And whereas, funding is necessary to continue the operation of WAIA, and all members of WAIA are asked to share equally in the operational cost of the entity. And whereas, the city of Van Buren budgeted funds in the 2019 city budget for such operations. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, fully supports WAIA and wishes to continue to support WAIA and the economic development of our region. Section two, the mayor and, mayor of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, is hereby authorized and directed by climate in the amount of $21,250 as the city's equal share for continued operations of WAIA.
Again, I alluded to this earlier. This is, this has been an ongoing effort for, it was previously called Rita. They've changed that. It's been neat because it's been a regional effort. And we'll see, not just the city of Van Buren contributes, it's Crawford County, it's Sebastian County, it's the city of Fort Smith, even though it's on our side of the river. But the region understands that it's going to have an economic impact on everybody. And so, if we can get this going, which I believe that we're going in the right direction, it's going to have a really positive influence on, on this whole River Valley.
Is this part of the 50,000 that we have approved or is this over in the budget?
No. We have paid 40,000 previous years. But the new budget is 21,000 for the year. It's an equal pay for, for every entity.
The 40,000 was for Vickerman and Associates so that they would do the study and come back with the report. So this is just an ongoing, the WAIA, so that we can continue showing our interest in this intermodal.
Yeah, it was, it was 40,000 previous to that. It was 50,000, I think, or something like that. Chair, your motion could be approved. Second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the room.
Councilmember Dodson. Councilmember Swine. Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Sparkman. Councilmember Nealon.
Chair, what's the resolution?
Zero two dash zero two dash 2019.
2019 has passed. Next item on the budget is a resolution to adopt a 2018 revised budget. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution adopting a revised budget for the year ending December 31, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, 2018 current year's revenues of $18,551,279.52, $18,551,279.22 are appropriated. And a copy of said budget is attached here to and made apart hereof. Said revenue includes the deduction of 2017 revenues, which were received in January 2018, and includes the addition of 2018 account receivable listings received in 2019. Section two, 2018 current year's expenditures of $17,494,718.27, $17,494,718.27, including expenditures from prior year's balances, are attached here to and made apart hereof. Said expenditures include the deduction of 2017 expenditures and includes the addition of 2018 accounts payable listings paid in 2019. Section three, all expenditures are approved and a copy of the revised budget is attached here to and made apart hereof.
This is something that we have to do every year to reconcile the previous approved budget. Give me a second.
Second.
Clerk, please call the room.
Councilmember Dodson. Councilmember Swine. Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Sparkman. Councilmember Nealon.
As Haddad declared, resolution number...
Zero two dash zero three dash 2019.
Zero two, zero three, 2019 has passed. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance regarding posted, the posting of certain ordinances. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled. An ordinance amending ordinance number zero one dash 2019, setting places for the posting ordinances and prescribing other matters related thereto. Whereas the newspaper previously printed in the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, has moved its printing services out of the local area. And whereas, the newspaper no longer maintains its primary office in the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, although it does still utilize a building in this municipality. And whereas Attorney General Opinion 95 dash 227 sets forth a guideline for determining if a newspaper is published in a municipality. And whereas, based upon the factors set forth in Attorney General Opinion 95 dash 227, a court could find that no newspaper is currently published in the city of Van Buren, which would result in the posting of ordinances only. And whereas, in consideration of the long history of the local newspaper publication in the community, continued coverage of local news in the city of Van Buren, that a large number of subscribers to the local newspaper are in the city of Van Buren, and that it is unclear under the law whether or not a court would find that the newspaper is published in the city of Van Buren. The city of Van Buren desires to continue to utilize the newspaper for publishing ordinances adopted by the city council in addition to posting in the five public places previously set forth in ordinance number zero one dash two zero, two zero one nine, and according to Arkansas Code annotated section 14, that's 55 dash two zero six. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, will continue to publish ordinances in the first August. In addition, to posting notices at the following five of the most public places in the city to ensure full opportunity for citizens to be given information regarding the passage of ordinances. Van Buren Municipal Complex, Van Buren Library, Van Buren Municipal Annex, Van Buren Police Department, Van Buren Senior Center. Section two, all ordinances and resolutions and parts thereof in conflict therewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Your motion is to suspend the rules and govern a second reading.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opinions? As Haddad declared, motion carried. Ask clerk to read the ordinance by title for the second time.
An ordinance amending ordinance number zero one dash 2019, setting places for the posting ordinances and prescribing other matters related thereto.
Your motion is further to suspend the rules and govern a third and final reading.
Motion.
All in favor of the motion? As Haddad declared, the motion carried. Ask clerk to read the ordinance by title for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number zero one dash 2019, setting places for the posting ordinances and prescribing other matters related thereto.
So this is, we're clarifying last month's ordinance that we passed. Met with Candace. Appreciate her, her research into this and making sure that we're following all, all the rules and understanding that the newspaper has left the city, they do still rent the facility. We're just wanting to make sure that we're following all the steps that we need to, following the ordinances, following the statutes. Ultimately, this is all about informing the public and communicating. And as I was saying, throughout the state and the city, that's, that's... As I was saying, throughout the state of the city, that's, that's really our primary function. So we just wanted to go and clarify, yes, we realize the papers, we will absolutely post these in the public places, but we'll continue to do that in the newspaper as well. It's interesting to note that we had talked about potentially adding our website as one of the five places. State law doesn't specify that. All these ordinances, that this original ordinance that we passed dealt with, all of those ordinances are on our city website. You can go on the website and get all that information. But we're just wanting to make sure we're following all the statutes. And I appreciate Candace' partnership in that. Do you have any questions? Motion to adopt the ordinance is ready.
I might come up here and adopt the order.
For a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call.
Councilmember Dodson. Councilmember Swine. Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Sparkman. Councilmember Nealon.
As having, therefore declare the ordinance number...
Zero four dash 2019.
Zero four, 2019 has passed.
I have a question after this one. I think when we adopted this last month, there was an emergency call. Do we need that again?
I, I don't think that an emergency exists that would just...
Next on the agenda is the financial report. Do you have copies of the report? Clerk, please read me now.
$1,524,805.1 cents.
For a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next on the agenda is the department reports. Do you have copies of the reports, the different departments? If you have any questions, department heads are here. If not, I'm declaring as filed, as filed as submitted.
How do we like the work of this being done on the street of the fire building?
Yes. We're waiting, we're waiting on the OTVs to move. So there's some transmission lines that run right in front of the building. So we're stopped right now until, until they move those. We can't power wash the front building. I've got these lines and water to move yet. OTVs can move those. And when they get finished, we'll finish getting those off there and see if there's any more of that ghost signs and lettering on the front that there are on the signs. So we preserve a lot of that stuff. And we're gonna, we'll see what we need to do to kind of keep it that way. We don't want that stuff to go away. It's, so that stuff is from back in the 1800s when the building was first built. And then by era, you can come forward and see some of the others. So it's, it's kind of, it's, it's not kind of cool, it's really cool. And we're gonna preserve that stuff. I've been talking with the mayor. Some of the historic district folks are real interested in now. I think we're gonna have some other discussions. So, but, but it's, it's a neat old building and I'm sure proud that the, that the city got that.
I was asked, Chief Hamlin, have you, you got any feedback on the school resource officers? Have they, have they given you some feedbacks? I know it's been a short period of time, you know, getting everybody in.
Yeah.
Cars are working great.
Absolutely. And the mayor, he mentioned, you know, that, that's good for the safety of, of the kids and the students and the faculty. But it also, the, the programs that they, that we offer, that we haven't been able to in the past because we didn't have enough, that's also a, a, a good thing about that. But yeah, they've all acclimated good so far. The school is happy with the officers and I'm sure happy with the schools. Good things gonna happen.
Chief Hamlin, also your recent work explaining was terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
I wish I'd take credit for it, but that...
It was terrific.
Under miscellaneous and general discussion, we have a couple of street closing requests. First is for Center for Art and Education's glow run will be on June 8th. Do I have a motion to approve, uh, street closing request?
I don't like that motion, but just to me, where, where is, where is this now? Is it gonna be same place it was?
It's gonna be at night.
It's pretty fun.
It's not...
Paint for all...
Yeah. The dark paint with the skies.
So there'll be some ghosts running, you'll see.
Do we have a motion?
Does it redo first Baptist, too?
I have a motion, not a second.
I don't know if we're supposed to do both of them. Let's just do both of them. Let's get a second for this.
Second, awesome.
So all in favor of the motion? Motion carries. And the other closing is for First Baptist for the Vacation Bible School on June 3rd through 7th. Do we have a motion to approve? All in favor of the motion? Do we need to, Karen?
I think we do.
Would you like to move Karen?
Appreciate it.
Do we have a motion to get a second? All in favor?
Okay, I say it.